All right, good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and welcome to the South River Board of Education regular meeting of Thursday, July 24, 2025. In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, laws of 1975 of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of the meeting of the South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner. On January 15, 2025, the notice was delivered to the office of the South River Borough Clerk and posted at the Board of Education Administration Building. On January 15, 2025, the notice was faxed mail to the following newspapers: Home News Tribune, The Star-Ledger. On January 15, 2025, the notice was posted at the South River Borough Clerk's office. Mr. Rosa, would you hold the role, please?
Mr. Bazak.
Mr. Bazak has been excused.
Mr. Botsen.
Here.
Mrs. Bush.
Mrs. Bush is excused.
Mrs. Lau.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Anguero.
Here.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Here.
Mrs. Yan-Yao.
Here.
Mrs. Urbani.
Here.
You've got it, Paul.
Thank you. Okay, on tonight's agenda, our first order of business are the minutes. Mr. Rosa, what do we have?
So, what dishes from our pre meeting?
Okay, and those would be the June 16, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Board members, what is your pleasure on these minutes?
Who will read you the minutes?
We have a motion by Vice President Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Yan-Yao. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. The minutes are approved. Our next item is the use of facilities. And, Mr. Rosa, what do we have?
We have addition number 766.
That is for these?
For the recreational department.
Right, that was revised. Okay, so, board members, what is your pleasure on the use of facilities request?
Madam President, if I may first, number 794.
Yes.
For the last 12 years, my wife and I have been there with our boys on football. There's very few members who come out to help on the morning of breakfast for the players. It's not just for the players, it's for cheerleaders and for Mrs. B staff. So, if any parents are out there can, you know, give a couple of hours on a Saturday morning to come on out, grab a little some eggs, flip some home fries for the football team and any other members. I know it would be greatly appreciated. I won't be there this year, like my boys are done. So, I know they're already on social media asking for more help already. So, I just want to put that out there. And with that, move the use of more facilities in accordance with more policies, please.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice President Nielsen.
Second.
And we have a second by Mrs. Sadowski. All in favor?
Aye.
The use of facilities practices. At this time, we're going to go to Mrs. Lau for our financial report.
Thank you. It resolved that the Board of Education hereby certifies that it is in receipt of a financial report which indicates that no major account has been over expended and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. The Finance Committee recommends that the reports of the Board Secretary and Treasurer of School Money for May 2025 be approved and is approved.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. Lau.
Second.
We have a second by Vice President Nielsen. Are there any questions on the financial report? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The financial report is carried. At this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Zercher, please.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Urbani. There are three items on my agenda this evening. I have some general updates, a review of our district goals, and then we have a presentation from Dr. Trupasano regarding some of our student data. But to begin with some of the updates, I do want to let parents know that we will be providing classroom and teacher assignments on August 15. This is going to be through the regular parent portal. Please let us know if you're having any sort of issue. Contact your child's school main office if you're having an issue accessing the portal for any reason. But those assignments will be posted there, like I said, on August 15. I do want to remind our incoming sixth graders or previous fifth graders, school year 24-25, that they are the grade level going through residency update and that is required for your child. And so, if you are an incoming sixth grader and you have not provided us a recent residency update and proof of residency, you will not be able to access the portal until you do so. So, parents, we do already have verification from many of the grade level families, and we're asking for the remainder to please go ahead and submit so that they can access our portal as well. Classroom supply lists are posted on our district website. They are in the alert section of the website. As soon as you go there, very accessible to parents. And they're also in each school's individual websites as well. We have some updates on our athletic and outdoor facilities at Denny Stadium. We are once again ready to welcome our spectators for the upcoming fall season. Last year's upgrades, such as the renovated concession stand, the enhanced picnic area, the new bleachers, those were all very much well received and used. But looking ahead for this school year, we are adding a brand-new modular press box. And this addition is going to feature a sound system. It will have Wi-Fi capability, lighting, and we are adding huddle cameras, which is something the coaches were really hoping that we would include in this project. And there will be additional bleacher seating installed directly in front of that press box, which will add to the seating that we currently have. Construction to this press box is not going to affect any of our home games this season. We are working around our home games. And that press box is expected to be fully operational by January. So, it will not be operational for this fall season, but it will be operational moving forward. The multipurpose turf field, we have some projects underway there as well. We have the new baseball dugouts that are being built, as well as a perimeter fence. The fencing is going to enhance safety during our recess period, which is important. We do have several of our elementary students use that field every day, and this will give them some protection. That's important. And then, as a reminder, the turf field is for permit use only. Community members who are interested in using any of our fields, any of our grounds, any of our buildings do have to go through the district's facility usage process and request that approval. That process is online, and it can be found on our district website. Primary school outdoor classroom. This is our last school to be seen its outdoor classroom space. It is going to be in a little triangular area where the green playground currently is. And we will have a space dedicated really for outdoor learning. That's really what it is designed for, as well as some activity as well. But we're looking forward to having that project completed. And then, our educational annex right across from this building. You can see it's still under construction, but it's definitely moving right along. This is a three-classroom addition at our board office building. And the new space also includes a small nurses exam and treatment area, as well as a multipurpose room. We anticipate that this addition is going to be ready around October 1st. We seem to be on schedule to target that date right now. And it will be dedicated for the upcoming school year to the pre-K program. With this project and the completion of the Early Learning Center in 24-25 school year, we are now in a great position because we are able to offer pre-K to all families who are interested. We do not have a waitlist at this time. And we're excited to be able to start our students in early learning. Next in my report, I would like to review the draft goals that will be activated after your approval this evening. We have four goals this year. We're looking to improve academic performance in language arts and math by increasing student proficiency in those two subjects through evidence-based instructional practices, targeted interventions, and data-driven instruction. We're looking to promote and expand our visual and performing arts offerings as well. We're looking to really enhance student engagement and creativity and expand access to visual and performing arts to all of our students at all grade levels. We're also looking to ensure the safe and appropriate implementation of artificial intelligence in our educational programs. And we're looking at tools and platforms that will be safe, ethical, and equitable, of course, and that will be put into place to enhance teaching and learning while safeguarding our students' privacy and promoting its responsible views. And then, our last goal is about safety and security. We're looking to ensure that all of our schools continue to maintain a safe, secure, and welcoming environment. And we're looking at that in two different ways. We're looking at that through our safety and security measures themselves and resources, but also in looking at social-emotional learning and being proactive in minimizing risks in regards to safety and security. And at this time, what I would like to do is turn the presentation over to Dr. Trupasano, who's going to present part one of our data public presentation, which is on NJGPA and AP exam data. Dr. Trupasano?
Thank you, Dr. Zercher. Good evening. This is the first of three presentations that will be summarizing the district testing data who are required within 60 days of public release to review the data, which is why we have separated it up into different components. So, it used to be one big report. Now, it's three short reports, which is not a bad thing. On the first slide over here, it's really the summary as I go through every year with what the GPA is. Graduation Assessment is the latest assessment to measure graduation readiness of junior students as they enter their senior year. It encompasses language arts and mathematics. Language arts is aligned to grade 10, beginning grade 11 standards, as well as mathematics, algebra, and geometry level. Again, I put this in there. In 2023, the Board of Education approved GPA as the testing requirement. For those, just as a reminder, students are required to not only pass classes, attain a certain level of credits, pass specific content guidelines, but they also must pass a graduation assessment. In this case, it is the GPA. Students who do not pass the GPA have a number of different options for testing. The first one is to retake the GPA. Those of us who've been in this a long time, remember the HESPA, and you can take that a number of times, and we still do the same thing with this assessment. For those students who have sat for the assessment and it's still not passed, they can, again, they can retake it or they can meet a cut score, a minimum cut score on a number of different other alternative assessments. And that would take place in their graduation testing requirement. Last year, these are our results right here. We tested 196 students in language arts, 199 in math. It's categorized as passing or graduation-ready and/or graduation-not-ready and not-passing. I've put the comparison up for the district and the state. If we move over to the right, the passing, obviously, the state percentages higher in language arts and math than us. I have it on a later slide. But one point that I'd like to celebrate a little bit is that while the state percentages have remained roughly the same, we increased significantly in mathematics graduation passing. So, as a former math teacher, I have a little pride in that, but that's for later. Demographic breakdown. These slides are now available on the district website, so I'm not necessarily going to go through every single component of it. But just to explain, anywhere you see an asterisk or a star indicates there's data less than 10 students. We have to remove that data from any kind of identify, the ability to identify a student. So, any students, any data that is less than 10 students has been redacted. The summary of the students on the left does not have to be, but anything for passing and not passing does, in fact, have to be hidden. Demographic breakdown for mathematics is also listed there. Comparable results. It breaks down again by race, gender, and by program. Program being free, produced, 504, our language learners, and special education. Following this, I go into our AP mean scores. These are the scores of our mathematics and our English language, as well as Spanish. You'll notice on the right-hand side for Comp-Si, this is year one of giving the Comp-Si test. Last year, you approved the curriculum, and we started doing the AP Comp-Si. So, it is more of a baseline than an achievement. While we do look at Calc AB, and I have to, I'll bring attention to Calc AB, the actual number of, or the percentage, sorry, the score received by the students is lower. We do have more students taking the test, so that is a positive. Next is the sciences and the social studies. Again, environmental science. This is the first year that you approved that course. The course is currently running. We had six students take it. Mean score of 2.3. The College Board global average. And the global average is AP score is given in any state or country that administer AP tests. So, that's listed as well. We did increase our score in U.S. history. However, the number of students electing to take the test is reduced. As a reminder, AP testing is optional. Students are not required to take the test. We can't necessarily force a child to take the test. They do take the course because it is a college-wide course, and the requirements of the course align with AP College Board, as well as accredited college institutions. So, what are our main takeaways? NJGPA is not going away. It is our testing requirement. The feedback that we get from this and the demographic breakdown makes us go back, take a look, and revise some of our programs. And actually, following this data, I did meet with Jamie, the principal of high school, and we did talk about certain things that we're going to look at for the AP courses, as well as the GPA. And again, a little note, while we did see a decrease as those categorized graduation-ready in language arts, we did increase in mathematics, which is, you know, something that many schools actually find their mathematics scores remain comparable. We saw a 7% increase in those who were graduation-ready. And in the fact that we're testing more students, more students became, were categorized as that. Moving forward towards improvement, as was noted in the first goal that Dr. Zercher did go over, we are really focusing on language arts and math this year at the lower level. We'll talk about the lower-level A another time when we go through the NJSLs. We're going to be, we're going to continue to review data in language arts and math at high school, as well as review the data specifically with teachers that are teaching individual courses. So, we're really going to try to micromanage that data down to the student level, down to the course level, down to the standard level to really make valid and different instructional decisions. We do continue to offer tutoring through the 21st Century Program at school. And we continue to grow the support for mathematics and literacy for our language learners. We have begun having our ESL teachers really turnkey information for teachers. They attend different workshops and different conventions. They bring that information back and whatever they have in terms of breaking things down for students such as vocabulary, such as technical language. They're actually turnkeying that information to our staff as well. And now, this year, we're instituting a brand-new IFRS procedure for the coming year, which is going to allow us to track students and their individual differences, their individual challenges in education a lot closer. So, that's something that we're also proud of. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Thank you.
So, the other thing that I will note is that one of our district goals is to improve academic performance in language arts and math, which is one of your main takeaways. So, they do work in concert with each other.
They do.
That's right. Thank you.
That concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. These items will be under the consent resolution. So, at this time, we are now going to open up the meeting for the reception of visitors. And the public may address agenda items only. There will be a public session toward the end of the meeting for any matters that would concern the Board of Education. If you do have any comments for the Board of Education for agenda items only, please state your name and address, and please keep your comments to a 10-minute time limit. And this is on first call, on second call, and on third call. Seeing nothing for the agenda public portion, we're going to move on to our consent resolution. Mr. Rosa?
The South River Board of Education, by means of a consent resolution, adopt various resolutions of routine and not controversial nature at one time. Whereas the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the said Board of Education in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Those are Superintendent of Schools, 3.1 to 3.3; Athletic, 6.1; Finance, 8.1 through 8.34; Instruction, 9.1 to 9.16; Policy and Legislation, 11.1 through 11.2; Human Resources, 12.1 to 12.24; Safety and Risk Management, 13.1 through 13.2; and the Residency, 16.1.
Okay, thank you. Board members, are there any items that need to be read separately or any abstentions on any of these?
Well, abstention, I'm staying at 12.12.
Anyone else? Seeing none, is there a motion on the consent resolution?
Nielsen reads consent resolution.
We have a motion from Vice President Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
From Mrs. Lau. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, now, we're going to move on to our committee reports. Under Athletics, Mr. Hudson, anything?
We have one item. Athletic annex, the committee have to review a whole item on this month's agenda. Upon the recommendation of superintendent, recognize the approval of item 6.1. There are no additional items on the agenda as listed including routine items. And it was only to state the annual membership into the state association, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the board under Athletics? Buildings and grounds, Vice President Nielsen?
There's nothing to report, Madam President.
Thank you. And our Finance Committee, Mrs. Lau?
Thank you. The agenda includes approvals for various contracts, grants, and service agreements for the upcoming school year. These include funding for programs such as peer mediation, extraordinary aid, non-public transportation, and dual enrollment, as well as service agreements in areas like security, elevator maintenance, pest control, translation, and student assessment. Several construction and facility improvement projects were also approved, including athletic fields, gym floor refinishing, and the Denny Stadium press box. Additionally, contracts were authorized for educational tools, musical licensing, and prom venue services reflecting broad preparations across academic, operational, and extracurricular domains. The Finance Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the items 8.1 through 8.21, with additional items 8.22 through 8.34 on the agenda as listed, including routine items. And that is all I have for my end.
Thank you. Would you please continue with instruction?
Yes, my dear. Thank you. The agenda items focus on instructional planning, program approvals, and operational updates for the upcoming school year. Key approvals include professional development plans, promoted instruction strategies, and partnerships such as the Safety Ambassador Program with Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital and an affiliation agreement with Roman University. Curriculum updates, which were extensive, Mrs. Sadowski and I reviewed 30 items. Student placements and evaluation models for teachers and administrators were also addressed. The Instruction Committee, after review of all items on this agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the items 9.1 through 9.12, with additional items 9.13 through 9.16 on the agenda as listed, including routine items. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no items under negotiation. So, we are going to go to our Policy and Legislation Committee. Mr. Anguero.
The Policy and Legislation Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the items 11.1 through 11.2, with no additional items on the agenda listed, including routine items.
Thank you. Human Resources, Vice President Nielsen?
Thank you, Madam President. The Human Resources Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the items 12.1 through 12.2, with additional items 12.21 through 12.22 on the agenda as listed, including routine items. That's all I have to say, Madam President.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Under Safety and Risk Management, Mrs. Sadowski, please.
Thank you. Safety and Risk Management Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of item 13.1 through 13.2, with no additional items on the agenda as listed, including routine items.
Thank you. Our School Board Borough Council Liaison, Vice President Nielsen?
I have nothing for tonight, Madam President, but I will be reaching out through central office to see if Mr. DeSantis has any available dates so that we can get together and discuss some guns on with the rec program and other items which the district needs to talk to. So, I'll reach out with some dates that are available, and hopefully, through central office, we can come together and get that done by the next month.
Great, thank you. If anybody has any items for the Liaison Committee with the Borough Council, please let Vice President Nielsen know before that meeting, once that meeting is established. Our PTA Liaison, Mrs. Sadowski?
Thank you. Our full PTAs are ready for September. I know there's a lot of planning going on about the events that are going to occur during the school year. And I just encourage parents to get involved at that level because PTAs can't happen without parents.
Thank you. And our Residency Committee, Mr. Yan-Yao?
Thank you. The Residency Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the items 16.1, with no additional items on the agenda as listed, including routine items. Thank you.
Thank you. Our South River Public Library Liaison, Mr. Hudson?
This Tuesday, we're having a program, New Standing Artificial Intelligence, is at six p.m. On July 30th, we're having Princess's Superhero Party at two p.m. August 30th, we're having the Messy Arts Program at six p.m. August twenty-sixth, we're having the Wave Goodbye to Summer Program at two p.m. And then August 6th, we're having End of Summer Vocals Party at two p.m. That's all I have.
Wow, that's quite a bit going on there. Thank you very much. Is there any old or new business to come to the Board?
Yeah, Madam President, I have something I never talked about yet. On July ninth, the governor signed into New Jersey Universal Free School and Kindergarten Act into law. If you get the time and you can go through that, he gives districts until twenty twenty-nine to twenty thirty to implement some things that are in that law. And I just want to let everybody know that we're ahead of that curve. Things that are in this law, people, Dr. Chennazano and his crew, Dr. Zercher and everybody else in this board, we saw this coming, and we planned ahead, so we're ahead of it. We have the buildings already built up. We're building them up. There'll be, like Dr. Zercher said tonight, hopefully in October. So we saw it coming, and I know we got a lot of flack when we decided that we needed to build buildings and to look forward to educating the children of South River the way we did. And we got a lot of guff for that, but I think this proves that we saw into the future with the knowledge that we have here, and that we're headed a curve. And I think that's a great thing for us to be that far ahead. And that's all I have to say. Back to ourselves on the back.
Yes, that's a great comment, and hopefully we can serve as a role model for some of the other districts. I'm sure they will be looking for good examples, and this definitely serves as a great example. So thanks to everyone involved in making this happen before it did become a law and we'd be scrambling around. So, thank you. Mr. Parton, is there an attorney's report for this evening?
Just echo what Vice President Nielsen said. This is a major change in a lot of districts, and it's had a major panic in a lot of districts. And here, it means nothing because you are so far ahead. So again, back to ourselves on the back, there are a lot of districts reacting to this news a lot differently than you.
Thank you. And now we need to pay the bills. Mrs. Lau?
The Finance Committee recommends that all bills presented, having been certified by the School Business Administrator Board Secretary, be paid as listed in ISO.
We have a motion by Mrs. Lau.
Second.
Second by Vice President Nielsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. At this time, we are going to open up the meeting for the reception of visitors, where the public may address any concern or comment that they have for the board. When you do come forward, please state your name and address, and please keep your comments to a ten-minute time limit. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board on first call? On second call? And on third call? This public portion of tonight's meeting is closed, and there is a need for a motion for a German?
Nielsen.
By Vice President Nielsen, and a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Sadowski. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Sure.
So we're here. Right, yeah.